Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:30 and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have announcements for our upcoming meetings, and we also have a presentation this evening. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, October 4th at 6:30 p.m., and Tuesday, October 18th at 6:30 p.m. We have a work session scheduled for Tuesday, October 11th at 6:30 p.m., and Tuesday, October 25th at 6:30 p.m. We're in the midst of budgets, and this is our budget schedule, and we invite everyone to come to all of our meetings if you so wish, and I'm happy to recognize anyone who wishes to speak at those meetings. So we have the department budget presentations Tuesday, October 25th at 6:30 p.m., a budget work session on Tuesday, November 15th at 6:30 p.m., and a budget work session on Tuesday, November 29th at 6:30 p.m. And then we adopt the budget, and the final tax levy on Tuesday, December 6th at 6:30 p.m. And now it is my pleasure to invite the Burnsville Rotarians to come up and give us the presentation. And I think the first one is Dr. Dick Manley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for inviting us. We're here today to represent Rotary here in Burnsville, and we have some monetary contributions for which we'd like to make to the city this evening. One that relates to the skate park, and the other to the garage. And so it's our pleasure to do this this evening.
Thank you. I will be receiving, but we also will be having photo ops, and so we'll have everyone, the Rotarians and everybody, come through. But I'm happy to receive, and then we will also...
This is the amount, $10,000.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. We'll also have us all stand here and take a picture, and all the Rotarians can come home, please. Yes?
We have from the Burnsville Breakfast Rotary Club a check of the amount of $9,254.54 with respect to the donation being made for the garage facility where we're trying to include the opportunities to produce music there.
Oh, thank you so much. They... On behalf of the council and our staff and the citizens of Burnsville, what Burnsville is blessed with is many organizations, service organizations, who do great things for our city because they love this city, and they want to make sure that this city continues to be enriched. And these acts of kindness show the care and compassion that the many members of the Rotarians have for this community and for many other things that you've done for the community in the past. And I just look forward to next year to again espouse the many contributions that not only Rotarians have made and other service clubs to make our community the community that it is today, where people like to live and also have their businesses exist. So thank you so much. We need photo ops, so if all of the Rotarians can... You can all come here, please, and if you can all stand up, the members of the council, and that would be great.
We'll run to your checks.
And so all the Rotarians come...
Oh, it's nice.
Yeah. And what everybody needs to know is Mr. Craig Ewing, our former city manager, is now the president of the new Rotary. Yay!
And our fire chief is the Marcus Rotary cousin.
Whoa! It's Burnsville really odd.
Can we move this down? Right. I've got that.
Okay.
I've got it.
And where are you going to post that, right? Very good. Thank you very much. You want to put this up here? Yeah. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to bring it here to Steve.
Cash flows? Like Happy Gilmore back in my car?
The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. And I see Mr. Kuchar, you would like to speak. Right here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is David Kuchar. I've been a Burnsville resident here for 15 years. I currently own a home in Burnsville, but I'm kind of stuck with a kind of a conundrum that I can't figure out. I'm an engineer by trade. I'm trying to start a local computer company in my neighborhood, in my town, but I'm not able to complete a solar project on my home. The current ordinance calls for aesthetically pleasing solar modules, or we commonly refer to them as panels, and that would work on a gamble roof, but I have a hip roof. And at one time when this was made, I can see that it was made in the best interest of the community because this is aesthetically pleasing in the ordinance. But the issue is that when it was passed, Sharp was manufacturing, the company Sharp, more likely these panels were coming out of Japan, was manufacturing them to have them triangular, but currently they're discontinued because there's really nobody else either with this ordinance or there's not a demand, so they discontinued manufacturing them because of the cost. So I currently have $25,000 invested into this project. I have signed agreements with Interconnect. I've got the equipment on my home. I've got the rails extended. This wasn't done by my choice. This was done by the contractor that I hired later came to tell me that this was the case. I initially hired the contractor in best good faith, knowing that they would know these ordinances and make me aware of that. I wouldn't go ahead and just do that without doing my due diligence, which I'm now doing. So I've looked across the world for these panels. I can't find triangular panels. I've been working with the city planner. You know, I'm aware of the conditional use process and, you know, possibly reducing escrow down to, you know, $1,000 from $5,000 with the non-refundable $750 application fee, but that's still no longer a guarantee. And, you know, I feel the best solution may just be, if possible, you know, look into a possible addendum or stay on that one clause of the ordinance until it changes and I can get triangular panels. I mean, I'm getting a lot of state and federal incentives to put in green alternative energies and to sell back a surplus to my community through Dakota Electric. So there's a lot of push for this in the community, and I recently just sold my electric vehicle to try to finish off this project, and I'm catching heat from my contractor because they want payments to finish it, but, you know, I did the 70% down, so I'm stuck with this on my roof. But I want to comply, I just don't know how, and even with the city, the planner doesn't know how. So we thought it was best to come in front of the council and come up with an idea.
Okay. One of the things is that you present an item to us that we don't have any background material on, so it's very difficult for us to say this is what we're going to do. But what I would suggest is that I would ask staff with the consensus of the council to bring this item to us at the next work session so that we can take a look at it and understand from staff's perspective what's been going on.
Right.
So we'll get both sides of the story, and then we can look at what is the best solution for you and for us, when I say us, the citizens of Burnsville.
Right. Yeah, because it's basically currently with the ordinance, the way it is, it's currently zoned solar out of Burnsville because if I can't meet the requirement, I mean, no other homeowner can meet that requirement.
Yeah. And that's something that we can take a look at. That's the right venue to do that.
Right.
Because it needs more discussion, and we need to be educated on the issue.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to bring it to the attention because I didn't, I kind of got stuck with where it was at, but I appreciate your listening.
But thank you for coming in and letting us know. So, members of the council, I would like, with your pleasure, I'd like to direct staff to bring this to the next meeting so that we can help Mr. Kuchar and also take a look at that ordinance and then find a solution moving forward. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good, staff. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, and you'll be notified, and so at the next meeting, we'll take a look at it, and we'll have all the information so that we can make a good decision.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you for coming in. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, we now move on to additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. Ms. Johnston, are there any emergency items?
None from staff, Madam Mayor.
Members of the council? Okay. We move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, the consent agenda, an item on the consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on the consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Ms. Johnston?
None from staff, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Members of the council?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Keely.
I'd like to remove item E, resolution accepting staffing for adequate fire and emergency response safer grant for the fire and EMS personnel.
Okay, very good. May I have a motion to adopt the balance, please?
We'll move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, and the motion carries. Very good. Councilmember Keely, this is the resolution to accept the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. This is the safer grant for the fire EMS personnel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and the reason I pulled this is I would like to have our fire chief, B.J. Youngen, review and present the data that supports why we're doing this before we vote to accept the grant. It, I think, it's been in the public, we've done this on camera, but I have learned over the nine years I've sat up here that people pay attention when we make that final vote, and the information leading up to that doesn't get necessarily the same level of attention. So because of the size and nature and the impact, the benefit actually to the city, I thought it would be best to revisit this one more time before we make our final vote in accepting this grant. Thank you.
Chief, gentlemen, good evening.
Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having us in, and I'll spend a couple minutes, and if you have any questions, I'll stand for those after I kind of recap what we've gone over for the safer grant. So a little bit of background, we've been providing EMS and fire service to the community in the same model since 1984. So since 1984, we've been staffing two fire engines and two ambulances every day. We've found out from our study and from our staff's perspective, we've maximized our use of technology to gain the efficiencies that we can out of our current system. We continue to increasingly rely on our mutual aid partners to provide ambulance service to the community, so that significantly keeps going up and provides a strain on their system. We've also maximized our ability to share services with our neighbors in the short term, as was discovered by our shared service audit last year. So the only thing coming out of that is a long-term look at more collaborative consolidated merger type of options. And out of our operations audit last year from Fitch and Associates, we also found, they also recommended that we put on a peak demand unit based on our call volume, and that's what we're proposing to do with the safer grant. So I think this chart easily depicts kind of, this is just since 2010, we've had a 27% increase in just six years of our call volume. And if you go back to 1984, when we started the ambulance service, we've really tripled our call volume when we were doing right around 2,000 calls a year. And if you look at that chart, the blue segments in the bottom of the graph are the fire runs, and you can see those stay very consistent at where we're at. What you see is the red, the red call volume is our EMS incidents that continue to increase. And I'll talk a little bit about why that is, but we're projecting at least a 4% growth in our EMS call volume every year. And with that rate, our operations audit determine that by 2025, we'll be doing 9,000 calls per year. This next graph talks a little bit about our mutual aid, and as you can see, from 2005, we were requesting 147 times, and in 2015, we were up to 518 times, we requested a mutual aid ambulance for assistance. This unit hour...
And just for the edification of our listening citizens, because we know our language and we speak it and we say mutual aid, that means you call for help from other cities.
Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Yes.
We call from a neighboring agency to assist us to cover an emergency call in our city.
Yes.
And if you look at that bottom line, that bottom line is how much we give back. So we requested 518 times, and then we gave back to the neighboring communities 93 times, so we're a bit out of balance with that. The next chart talks about unit hour utilization. What that is, is what's, how many calls are each of those units going on, and how taxing are we on the emergency side? So the horizontal line, it's kind of an orange line there, is the typical utilization of a fire department, around 10%. The maximum we'd safely ever want to run our units is that 30% mark on the blue line. So you can see that both of our medic rigs, which are the two right vertical lines, are well over that typical utilization, and our medic one, which is the third from the left there, is starting to approach that blue line, which gets concerning from a staff perspective of wear and tear on our people and our ability to maintain that rate, that pace of call volume. The next graph talks about when do our calls come in, and this is, this talks about in a military time, so those that aren't used to military time, you know, it starts at 1 a.m. and goes all the way through midnight. So you'll see afternoon, it goes to 1,300 hours, 1,400 hours for 2 p.m. on up. And really what I want to point out here is if you look from about 8:00 or 9:00 a.m. until about 8:00 p.m., which is the 2,000 mark, the 20 on the bottom, is really when our peak demand is. That's when our call volume is the highest, is during that daytime, for a lot of reasons. But primarily, people are up and mobile during that period of time. We have a lot of clinics in town.
A Tuesday? Wow.
Yeah, there's definitely...
What happens on Tuesday?
There's definitely some peaks in there. Different days of the week, different times of the day. The next slide talks about our projected revenue growth, and this is assuming that we're capturing all those EMS runs, and you can see by the unit hour utilization or our mutual aid that we're peaking out our ability to use our current ambulances for those calls. So we are, this projected revenue over the next 10 years is, again, predicated on the fact that we capture those calls with our own ambulances. So you see that that line continues to go up pretty equally to what our call volume goes up because we bill for the ambulance service, so that's assuming that we will pick up more patients. So what are the increasing pressures that the department continues to feel on the EMS front is really the aging population. We know the baby boomers are hitting that retirement age, and as folks get older and age, we tend to see more ambulance calls of them. So that demographic is definitely changing for us. The increased emergency call volume that's associated with that, again, we talked about our current system capacity. If you compare our unit hour utilization rate, our mutual aid numbers, and our call volume, they all correlate to really maximizing the ability to capture those calls with our current system, and then again, that mutual aid use. So what's our proposed solution? Is a 12-hour truck that would cover, or a truck that would cover 12 hours per day. They're available during those peak demand times. It's a really data-driven approach. It's very flexible. It's an efficient use of our resources because we're only putting that on when we think that we'll have the highest, when our data shows we're going to have that highest call volume. And really, from the fire service perspective, it's a non-traditional approach. The more traditional approach is to put on 24-hour trucks. Well, this saves us at least two staff members by only doing it 12 hours a day. So it's the most efficient way that we can cover those additional calls with our system. So then you ask, okay, well, why a safer grant? Well, the department can provide a more reliable service to the community, given that we'd add an additional resource to our system. It gives us the opportunity to fund the base salaries for two years of those four firefighter paramedics that would staff that 12-hour emergency response vehicle. It gives the department the opportunity to determine the most efficient use of the non-traditional response unit. Again, this will be the first time we're introducing this kind of non-traditional approach. It allows us to spread the capital investment of a new unit over the two years, and the city can also realize that revenue of those additional patients over those two years. So it's kind of a balanced approach to implementing a new system or a new capacity to handle the increasing pressures on our system. So with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chief Youngen. That was great. It was a good review for us, and I think a good review for all of our citizens watching. I personally, if I may make a comment...
Please.
I think public safety does include the health and well-being of our citizens, and it's clear by your charts, the demographics are driving EMS calls, and it's good to see we're not having any more fires, even though our city is building and we're still adding some population, not by the rate that we used to, but there is a demand for EMS, and we're the providers of that service. Grant gives us two years of fully funded to do the peak, so I think it's an efficient use of that grant and handling the 911 calls. So thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation and you coming back and doing it a second or third time, maybe. And with that, I would move that we approve acceptance of the safer grant.
Second.
Councilmember Keely makes the motion, second by Councilmember Cofflin. And what I want our citizens to know is that we sent a lot of money to the federal government, and this is the right thing for us to do to get some of that money back for us to continue to provide services for the good of our citizens. And in 1997, we did the same thing for cops, and here we are for fire, doing the same thing, but we need to continue to look at those resources that are available so that we can bring that money back here. We give a lot away, and let me tell you, it's being used in other areas. So thank you for putting that grant out, and so we have a vote, a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Good luck, and thank you. Look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now move on to item number five. Item number five is a public hearing, and this is a resolution to vacate all the drainage and utility easements over Lot 1, Block 1 on Burnhaven, second addition. Mr. Ryan Peterson, our city engineer, is presenting, and you have a kitchen cleaning item.
Some more kitchen cleaning tonight, you did so, but... So as you said, the location is Burnhaven, second addition, Lot 1, Block 1. That is the storage lot for vehicles just north of the Burnsville Toyota Maintenance Center. The red area illustrates the area that's in for vacation of easement, and this area would be what we would receive back in easements if a future item is approved. The same area is here. This is the storage lot, and then this would be where the maintenance center is. As you can see, we'll be getting new easements to replace the old ones. Comments with this? This is associated with the continued Burnsville Toyota Car Wash application. They're trying to expand their car wash there if you were. The item was official, this item was officially noticed prior to the item at the planning commission getting continued, otherwise you wouldn't be seeing it this evening. So since we officially noticed it, we thought it'd be more efficient to just hold the public hearing tonight, and then we can bring it back with the full project. So if there's anyone here to talk about those zoning comments, my recommendation would be to go back to the planning commission on September 26th, bring it up there, and then obviously, anyone can say what they want, but the best location to do that would be at the public hearing that's been continued.
So in terms of process, Mr. Peterson, I will open and close, open the public hearing. If nobody speaks, I'll close the public hearing. You will bundle this then along with the Toyota application, so, because we're closing the public hearing, so we don't need to have another public hearing. It's just being continued, and you'll bundle it.
Madam Mayor, exactly right. Open, yep, we open the public hearing, take comments, close the public hearing, table the item, and then it'll be one continuous item, CUP, plat, whatever it is, plus resolution vacating easements.
Just so everybody knows, the public hearing is held here, but it'll be bundled when it comes back.
That is our, will be our concept that we'll bring to you.
Good, very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Peterson? All right. This is a public hearing. I will open a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second. Mayor. Move to bundle.
Oh, no.
To planning commission.
Well, close the public hearing, and then the motion should be...
To continue.
To continue.
To Senate.
To the planning commission and bundle. So is that, yes?
No.
If you could go back one on the overhead, the last bullet is our motion to table the item.
Yeah.
Until the planning item is considered at the council meeting.
So not take, but, okay, I closed the public hearing, and it is tabled.
Motion to table.
Yeah.
That would be correct.
That is correct. Okay, there's a motion to table.
Second.
And second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and your item is tabled, and coming back after it's resolved at the planning commission level.
Very good.
Thank you. The next one is yours, so don't move, because we're moving right along here. The next one is a public hearing, and this is a resolution to adopt the assessments for the Dupont 126 Cliff Road Street Improvement Project. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you very much. The project, you described it nicely there. I'll make an introduction. We have Sarah Lloyd with our consulting firm, Volnamenke, who is our project manager on this project, if there's any particular construction questions. Otherwise, we'll just review the process, project details, and then I'll have the public hearing for assessments. So in October, the council ordered a preliminary report. The survey work was done, and preliminary plans were generated. We had a neighborhood meeting back in November of 2015, took notes there. December, we received the report. Also in December, the second meeting, we had the public hearing to consider the improvements, order the project and plans. February, the plans were approved and ordered out for bids, bid the project, awarded a contract in April. Construction began in May, and then was substantially completed in August. Assessment letters were also mailed earlier this month, and then we're here at the bottom with the assessment hearing. Should all be levied, there'll be 30 days to pay those, or else they'll be financed over a period of years, and I'll expound upon that later on in the presentation. So the project in general, this is Highway 13 and 5, and basically it's resurfacing of the roads and rehabilitating those from just west of, or east of Connerwood 5 on 126 Street up to Dupont, and then Dupont Avenue from 126 Street up to Cliff Road. Then on Cliff Road, we had or extended the turn lane back to help with congestion mitigation up there. Let me see here, basically, we went with a thicker mill and overlays to get more pavement down there, as because of all the heavy traffic, it needed a little bit more oomph than sometimes our traditional mill and overlays. We had one large area of reconstruction because it was too far gone to resurface it. We added street lighting. Interestingly enough, a lot of it's under the transmission lines, and we've, there's a couple issues with it, so they are not yet energized, but we still plan on having those energized before the fall's done. So that is the current condition of our street lighting out there. Also did some utility structure improvements, replaced curb only as necessary, and then quite a bit of sanitary sewer rehabilitation. The pipe was out of shape, literally it was deformed, and we went in and replaced it, so we'll get much more reliability of our sewer system down there. On Cliff Road, basically, we talked about that turn lane extension, and I have a photo to describe that. So here's the before condition on 126 Street, and then the after. You can see they're not as bad as some of our streets that we've built, and the point of rehabilitation is to avoid getting them to be so poor. So then here's on Dupont Avenue before and after.
Nice.
This is the section we had to rebuild because of the... This is the section we had to rebuild, um, because of the extensive cracking before and after. And then Cliff Road, you can see here, there's the two lanes start there and then after the fact, the right turn lane now extends all the way back to, uh, DuPont Avenue and it, and there's a definite noticeable difference in traffic flow out there at this point. Uh, total funding for the project is one point, almost one point two million dollars. Special assessments, um, make up two hundred thousand of that or just a little bit more. And then, um, one of the main impetus for the project was the.
The host grant.
Community grant we got, which is just great that we can make these improvements. And, uh, from the city's perspective, from our, the taxes that are used for roads, not have to use hardly any of that. So great news there. And then, uh, the utility funds pay for those, uh, respective improvements. Uh, what it looks like in a bar graph, special assessments pay seventy percent of the total improvement. Assessments are based upon forty percent of the street costs. That's our policy. Um, out here, we use actual costs because it's kind of a different project than normal. So as opposed to using a predetermined rate, we, uh, figured out the actual costs. And then once you know the total street costs, we, uh, calculate a dollar per foot rate and then how you figure out your individual assessment per parcel is multiply that by the footage that each parcel has. Um, and then sixty percent of the costs for street were paid by the grant, as we discussed already, and then all the utility costs by the utility funds. Um, good news on this, the estimated rate at the time of preliminary report was thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents a foot, um, due to good bids and not having to, uh, repair so much under the payment, it was down to twenty-four fifty a foot. So, um, great news on our prices there. Um, and those can be paid off over fifteen years. Uh, there would be interest, but that'd be if they're not paid yet this fall. Uh, we haven't received any, um, formal objections at this point. Um, if we do receive some, we could continue that particular item or that particular assessment. Otherwise, we recommend approving the remainder of the assessments, um, at this time. And with that, this is a public hearing. I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Peterson? Same process. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Wen makes the motion, second by councilmember Cofflin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign and the motion carries. The next item is also a public hearing and this is a resolution to adopt the assessments on the first half of twenty sixteen code enforcement charges. Mr. Chris Forsland, our code enforcement and license coordinator, is presenting. Mr. Forsland?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, as indicated, this is the, uh, public hearing for the code enforcement delinquent fees, uh, due from January one to June thirtieth of twenty sixteen. And as council is well aware, that these fees are for, to recover some of our costs for enforcement of general code enforcement such as exterior storage, uh.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, property maintenance, items along that line. Uh, one of our, just review of what steps we've taken at this point for the, the public is those folks who have had violations have been given several notices and, uh, have been indicated that there may have been a, a reinspection fee that may be due and these have gone delinquent and not been paid. By the time we get to establishing the tax rule, we, we haven't had any contact or in some cases not, we haven't gotten necessarily resolution on here. We, uh, council adopted a resolution declaring these and calling for the public hearing on August first and we mailed notices out on August thirty-first. We also with that notice indicated that we had, would have our open house on August, or September fourteenth, where we could perhaps resolve some of these issues and talk about some of the details. Uh, we had four people sign up, two showed up and we did get those resolved, which was good to know. Uh, for this year, uh, we're, you know, if, in your packet here, we have lowered that down just a little bit more since, since the packet went out, uh, to about twenty thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars in, um, charges that we can recover through special assessments. Uh, we did have, as of, uh, this evening, one objection that was, uh, provided to the clerk in writing for, uh, uh, I'll get that to you. Issued by Mr. Dwight Larson, representing Cliffview Plaza LLC. And, uh, at this time, staff would recommend that those that are not being contested be